I'd like to call this meeting together, May 6th. Board Director's Special Meeting and let's see. Roll call, please.
Dr. Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uden.
Present.
President James Farman.
Present.
Thank you.
Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience or on the phone that would like to comment to the Board of Directors? If not, we'll move along. Now, this is authorize a regular voting member to and alternative voting member for the appointment process and nomination period for the Orange County Local Agency Formation Commission, better known as LAPCO. Regular Special District Member Seat and consider nominating a candidate for the regular Special District Member Seat. What's the wishes?
So typically, Mr. President, what happens in the past is that usually the board nominates the president as the voting member and the vice president as the alternate voting member. And we have to submit this by this week, so we need action today on this item.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we have Jim Ferryman as our president be the acting spokesperson. And then also for an alternative, we can use Art Perry, he'll be there too.
No, we should have Bob Uten as the vice president.
Okay, then Bob.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you for your support. I don't know what this thing is doing.
Okay.
But it's not good.
Mr. President, we're on review and discuss draft.
Yeah, I just stumbled upon it.
Okay.
Review and Discuss Draft 2020 through 25 Strategic Plan.
Great.
Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, my plan today is, as you probably saw in the staff report and on today's slide, it's quite extensive and I don't anticipate getting through the whole slide and talk about the whole draft plan today. And you'll see later, we have some dates set up for in the future to continue this discussion. So, but today, what I'd like to share with the board and the public is kind of talk a little about the strategic plan. And also, you know, why we have such a plan. When we talk about, we'll talk about the vision that we created, the mission, our core values, and we'll start going into some of the elements. But we won't hit all of them today. So, I'd like to start out saying that a strategic plan is a document that describes where an organization is going over the next few years and describes how it's going to get there. It's a coordinated and systematic way to develop a course and direction for an organization. Now, as you know, in the past 10 years, we've had two strategic plans. The first one we did was in 2010-15, we titled it Meeting and Exceeding the Public's Expectations. And then we have our second plan, which we're just finishing up, would be finished up in June of this year, which is the 2015-20, titled Planning for a Better Tomorrow. So, now we need, so the purpose of today's meeting is to develop another five-year plan, a 2020-25 plan. And today is to discuss that draft plan that we created. And we're looking for your input and the public's input. And we did receive comments from Mr. Moser, which we'll share with you and the public as well. So, Nalani, if you go to the next slide, please. So, this is the dates that, so for the staffing, we've met four times already to develop this plan before you. And today's, May 6th. As I mentioned, we probably won't get through all the elements today, so we can continue the discussion at your study session on May 12th. What I don't have on here, which I should have put on here as well, is that we'll be sharing the plan with the Citizens Advisory Committee, which is on May 13th, so we will get their comments as well. And then, if you want, we could bring it back. There's another meeting we need to have the board. We could bring it back at your May Board of Directors meeting. And then, after receiving your comments, comments from the public, we would bring it back in June 22nd for adoption with implementation on July 1st. Any questions on the schedule?
I think we ought to work with the Citizens Advisory Committee and, you know, have them have some input.
Definitely, definitely. Well, we'll definitely have that. It'd be their, actually be the first meeting with the new members too, so I think that'll be an appropriate time to share that with them. Okay, so.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, but probably wouldn't be able to go over the whole thing with them because it'll take too long, but you could go over the basic part.
Yes.
You're right about that, yeah.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, so we're all thinking the same way here.
Okay, okay, very good.
That's May 13th at 6 o'clock.
Correct, that's correct. Okay, so first I'm gonna talk about the vision statement. And what is a vision? A vision is a dream that does not exist. And the best way to describe, the best way I describe a vision is try to picture what your community or a picture, close your eyes and picture what it's gonna look like. What do you want your community to look like in the future? It does, it needs to be inspirational and easy to remember. In other words, just a few words. Sometimes you might see some vision statements that are like almost a paragraph. And if you ask those employees, hey, do you know your vision statement? Nine out of 10 probably wouldn't know what it is. So that's why it's important to have just a few words, so your staff can remember what that vision statement is. Now, our 2015-20 vision is difficult to picture what the community would look like. Because what the 2015-20 vision says is promoting a sustainable environment through innovation and cost-effective sewer and solid waste services. So, again, what does that look like? And I think that's hard. If you try to close your eyes, what does innovation and cost-effective look like? In my opinion, in the staff's opinion, it's, you can't, you can't do that.
No.
So, when we're going through this process, the vision, you know, we'd say, hey, CMSD, we're in the business of collecting trash and wastewater, right? And so we have a duty to ensure that it's done right, because if it's not done right, the community will be contaminated. And what's the community contaminated with? Raw sewage, litter, food scraps, other forms of trash. And that's, and so if you go to the next slide, Nalani.
Oops, sorry.
Nope, next one passed, the vision statement. Nope, keep going on. There you go. So that's where we came up with leading a sustainable community that is contamination free. Now, I think Mr. Moser had some comments on this one. I think he said contamination was a little confusion. But I guess, I guess, again, it's interpreted how you want to read it. Staff, well, we read contamination, as I mentioned earlier, contamination means, you know, you're polluting the environment, you're you know, contaminating the water source or the land with raw sewage or trash. Nalani, if you don't mind, if you can read Mr. Moser's comments on vision statement?
Sure. Give me one second. Mr. Moser says, "To me, the inclusion of the verbal leading makes this an action-oriented mission rather than a description of a hoped-for future state. Also, contamination conjures up visions of spills of hazardous waste, which isn't really something CMSC is normally responsible for cleaning up unless the district's sole vision is zero SSOs, which then rather leaves out any stated vision as a solid waste. I would suggest as a vision, something more like a community free of waste, or more precisely, a community free of solid and liquid waste." End comment.
Thank you, Nalani. So again, to me, what does that look like? What is a community, if you close your eye, free of solid waste and sewer waste? Again, I can't picture what that looks like. And so, while Mr. Moser's comments are good comments, but again, I don't, to me, that's not a good vision. Again, when you try to rely on what you want the community to look like in the future, what is that picture gonna look like? This is what we came up with. So, the Board Directors, I'd like to ask your opinion. Do you like this vision? Do you think this is the right vision for the future?
Pretty timely, it seems to me.
Jim, I have a comment when you're ready for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think I agree that the word contamination probably is not the best word. If we could come up with some other thing to replace that.
Okay.
Be smarter, you know, I don't know about Mr. Moser's ideas, but I think he's right about the word contamination. That would be my input.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, this Mike, my comment would be contamination, everybody knows what that means. I mean, what Moser said, when Scott, as you read it, I thought, you know, this isn't all happy and it's not utopia. I mean, contamination is what we're trying to prevent. And I think the general public understands contamination.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to comment too. I don't think we need the leading at all, and I don't think we need the contamination. And in the past, when we did do these kind of vision statements, it was always said, we shouldn't have too many words in it. And to me, and as I'm looking at it right now, it's wordy. I think that we're forgetting the communication that we need to say to communicating to the public. I'm not saying that we do any certain verbiage on it. The four of us, the five of us can decide what we think, but I'm just thinking, we need to say communicating to our community. Something like that, something very small, so that we, you know, we're still going to have after that doing some, a mission. You can even put that in the mission and not do the vision, whatever. My thoughts.
Yeah, I'm not sure I like the word. I think contamination is not the proper word. I think, I think the mission statement is to protect public health and preserve the environment. And those words denote, you know, safety, a safety kind of ethic for me. So, leading a sustainable should not be the first word either. It could be something about community safety. I don't know where the word sustainable, you know. Sustainability should be defined somewhere in the strategic plan. So, I'm not, I don't I don't like the word contamination. I don't think it's a strong enough word.
Okay, okay.
You know, as Bob says that, or Director Uden says it, I was thinking that protect the health and safety of the community might be just it.
Okay, but I understand the word contamination. We can find a new word, but again, remember, try to picture, what is, what, close your eyes and picture what is community gonna look like? How do you, how do you picture communications? What does that look like? How do you, how do you picture safety? What does that look like? You know, it's not just words. You gotta, you gotta visualize it. That's what vision is. It's a visual, it's a visual. What did you, what did you visualize? Contamination means, when we, it means, when you're in a community, you don't see any litter in the streets. You don't see sewage in our waterways. You don't see sewage out in the public. Now, we can change that word contamination, that's fine, that's nothing problem. But I just want to reiterate to the board, when you're thinking of vision, it has to be a visual thought, not just words.
Anybody else?
I just, I think that we just need to change that word contamination.
Okay.
And that's what I put, but if you guys, if the staff could present us with another idea.
Sure, sure. I'm getting the feeling from the Mozer where they don't like that word contamination, so so we can, we can go back and discuss with the staff and come up with another word and share with that to you at the study session meeting.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, very good. Let's move on, Nalani. Okay, so the mission statement, our 2012-20 mission statement is protecting our community's health and environment by providing solid waste and sewer collection services. Now, a mission statement is different from vision. A mission describes what we're going to do and why we're doing that. It's more concrete and more action-oriented than a vision statement. So, the mission, the 2015-20 mission, it describes the what, you know, but it fails to describe the why. You know, why does CMD want to protect our community's health and environment? So that's why we came up with our proposed mission statement, was to protect public health and preserve the environment, which is, which is the what. And then the why is for our current and future generations. We want to protect it for people to enjoy, for people to be healthy and enjoy the environment now, and for our future generations to do the same. So, now is your opportunity, the Board Directors, I'd like to see your comments on the mission statement.
Jim, I have a comment. I think, I think it looks pretty good, myself.
I like it just the way it is.
Yeah, I like it too, but I think the vision statement should follow the mission statement.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think if you look at, if you look at previous, the vision is the big picture. That's what you're, that's the mission is what we're trying to achieve. That is the ultimate goal, is the vision. And how we get there is through our mission. So the vision should be first, followed by the mission. The mission gets us to the vision.
The only thing I would add to the mission statement is what you said I like, but I think it's too broad. I'd like you to see, like to see us address, you know, the environment for current and future generations in our community or within our community, something that directs it back to who we serve. What you've got there, we could be doing this for the whole world. And I'm being facetious, but I'd like to see a little bit of verbiage in there that directs it towards our community.
Okay, okay, we can do that.
It does say protecting our community's health and environment.
That's, that's the 2015-20, so, so we can, we can amend that the revised one to say something that Director Schaefer mentioned, to kind of tie it into our community, tie it to the district. So it's like Director Schaefer says, so it's not like, we're not, we're not talking about the, you know, all of Orange County or all of California or the entire world, it's just our own local community.
Yeah, I like that, but I'm just gonna throw out an idea. Can we put the vision and make mission statement on one page? Because that could be the vision and mission. Just a thought. I mean, I don't know if we can do that or not, but I just thought that might be something.
I mean, technically, they are one page. We could put it on one page, but again, you want to separate it, you know, that, again, going back to the vision is is what you're trying to achieve. That's the big picture. That's, that's the, that's the end game. That's the goal. So you want that separate. You want, okay, this is what we're trying to achieve in the next five years. And how we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it by protecting our community's health and environment. I'm sorry, we're gonna do this by to protect the health and preserve the environment for current, future generations in our community, or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, I just threw that out as an idea.
Okay, very good.
It may not be good.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think the mission statement, I still think the mission statement comes first. That's the big picture. The vision is how we're gonna do it.
No, it's backwards, Bob. You got it backwards. The vision is the, that's the end game. That's what you're trying to achieve. The mission is, is how you achieve it. It's what, it's, it's, it's the what and the why. The vision is the big picture. That's your goal, that's your end game.
Okay, well, yeah, the textbook I was reading about it in, you know, has it the other way.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's move on. So I got some good comments on the mission. So next, we'll go on the core values. The core values are distinct characteristics about how CMSC operates and what makes us unique in the way we are going to, going about realizing our vision. Again, that's the end game, right? We ask where we want to go. That's the roadmap we're getting to, is our vision. The core values must be specific, actionable, and written in a way that everyone within the organization can be held accountable. Now, the 2025 core values are very similar to the 2015 core values. There's only, the only, there's a couple of differences. One, we changed out, we switched technology to professional, I should say professional development, not profession, it's a professional development. And we did that, and then, there was two there. You know, I was supposed to, and, oh, and the wording, we did the wordings was a little different. So, you'll notice balance in 2015-20 is a little different than we wrote in 2025, but it's still, it's still our core value. So the only really big difference is that we removed technology, we replaced it with professional development, and then we placed by order, alphabetized it, so. So those are, those are our core values. Any questions on that? Any comments?
Anybody have anything?
That looks pretty good.
Well, yeah, that, I think, I think balance, balance should be community-related, you know, and not just staff. I mean.
That's a good idea.
That, you know, staff, staff carries out all this. And they should be a healthy part of it, but we value healthy work. Well, I don't know, I, the word staff is too limiting, I think, for the core value. They should be included in here somewhere, but I.
Well, because, well, understand, core values, it is staff-driven. They're not, they're not community-driven, because remember I said, this is, this holds us accountable. So, these core values hold us accountable to achieving our vision. So if we, if we stick to these core values, then we're, we can, we're on our way to keeping our vision. So it shouldn't really be community-driven. This is, the core values is staff-driven, it is staff-driven.
Well, I think it's not staff-driven, I think it's board-driven.
Well, true, board-driven, ultimately, you do adopt it, but, but the staff's the one that implements the plan.
Absolutely.
And so for staff to implement the plan, we have to be held accountable, and these core values will help us hold, be, hold us accountable. And they're actionable and specific, which is also very important.
Well, so we have, we have a healthy, is it, is it a healthy workforce? Healthy, there's a word missing in that, in that percent, in the, in the balance description.
Well, what it, what it means, obviously.
Work and life balance.
We value a healthy work and life balance, meaning, it means that we value, we value our private lives as well as our work life, you know, in other words.
Alright, alright.
80 hours a week to our work, you know, because we have a life, right? So, that's what that whole sense is supposed to mean.
Okay.
Well, why don't you, when you have your meeting with the staff, again, just get a feedback from them if they think we can add that part that Bob wants. I think you can talk about it with your staff.
Okay.
Just an idea.
Sure, we'll do that. Okay, so moving on. The next are the elements, and this is the meat and potatoes of the plan, right? This is, these are what critical and important to our organization's strategy. They're virtually the the 2025 strategic elements is pretty much the same as our 1520 elements with two exceptions. One, number six, personnel organization management. We revise that to human resources management and development. More, most organizations refer to personnel as human resources. They don't, you don't really see the call on personnel anymore. It's called human resources. And then we added an eighth element, emergency preparedness, which is obviously very timely in today's scenario. So we thought it was important to have an element of emergency preparedness. Any questions on that?
I just had an idea. Jim, if you want me to speak.
Sure.
I was thinking maybe you can list them in a different order, maybe based on what you think is the most important. That was the only thing I said. I mean, it looks fine, but I mean, is there one stronger than the other?
I, I don't think, for, for the plan, I don't think, I don't think you should, you should, in my opinion, you should not favor one element over the other. It should all be treated equally, really. It's just that, we just had to list it this way. They're all treated equally. In order to achieve our vision, right, we have to do all these eight elements and do it well. We can't, we can't do, we can't do well in sewer and not, not do well in human resources, nor to achieve our vision. You know, you know what I'm saying? So they all have to be really treated evenly.
Okay, just a thought. This, that's, that's the only thing I would do if we had to change.
Our, what, what, what order would you put them in?
I think right now, number eight should be number one. And then, maybe finance, number two, but I mean, then, that's just where I'm coming from, just based on today's things that are happening.
No, that's the only thing I was thinking too. I like the emergency preparedness number one, because that's most important.
And then, that's the thing is, I don't think, again, you don't take one element more important than the other. They're all important. And so you treat them equally.
Oh, yeah, but I don't think they're talking about the importance of the elements. It just, you, you, you just said it's just a list.
With, with no, no you know, well.
Well, when people look at a list like that, you think emergency preparedness is so important to them, our community, period. I mean, that's my own thinking.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. If you want, if you want to put emergency person number one, we can, we can do that. Not a problem.
I'd just leave it up to the staff and you, and you meet again. If you want to even in this order, that's okay. But just, we, I just threw that as a thought.
Okay, we'll have that discussion.
I have the same thought.
Well, you could have them in alphabetical order too.
There's another way, there's another way of doing it. Yes, definitely. Very good. Okay, let's, let's move on. Next slide, please, Nalani. All right, so under each strategic element, what we do is we, and this is also on our last, on our current 2015-20 strategic plan, we assign an objective to each element, right? And the objective statement describes why the element is important to achieving our vision. So we developed a list of strategies, and after that, we set up a strategy explaining why the initiatives will reach their objective. So for sewer infrastructure, we came up with this objective. I can't, my oh, hang on a second. It's on touchscreen. There we go. So for sewer, sewer objectives to maintain an optimal wastewater collection system to prevent sanitary sewer overflow. Again, optimal is, when we mean optimal, we mean high performing. It is performing at its best abilities. That's what we want optimal to be, well-measured. And obviously, the goal is, obviously, to have a zero SSOs. I'm sorry, you know, I forgot, Nalani, I forgot to mention comments from Mr. Moser on, on the mission and the core values. Can you read those to the public?
Yes. Mr. Moser states that, in reference to the mission, "I find the proposed statement quite misleading. My father worked for many years as a sanitarian for the county of Los Angeles, and later what became known as their Department of Environmental Health. I would guess many members of the community would guess a sanitary district employee sanitarians who ensure the public is healthy by inspecting restaurants, dairies, swimming pools, camping facilities, etc., and reviewing development plans for health issues. But CMSC does not employ sanitarians. They work for health departments, yet the proposed CMSC mission statement sounds exactly like what I would expect for a health department, which CMSC is not. My understanding is CMSC's mission is to safely dispose of solid and liquid waste generated within its boundary, although oddly, not all solid waste and not all liquid waste and not exclusive, and not exclusively from Costa Mesa. I would suggest the mission statement state what CMSC actually does, something not at all evident from its name." End comment.
Okay, and then what about the core values?
Mr. Moser says, "I would suggest for the objective, to maintain an optimal wastewater collection system and prevent sanitary sewer overflows. The reason, they seem somewhat independent goals. An optimal system is desired not solely to prevent SSOs. Optimal might, for example, include efficiency and delivering the needed service without unnecessarily." Optimal might, for example, include efficiency and delivering the needed service without unnecessarily elaborate piping or expense, and comment.
Okay. Did, did he have any comments on the, I think he just read it on the objective for sewer, sewer infrastructure?
That was it, Scott.
Very good. So, board director, so this is the objective for sewer infrastructure. Comments? Suggestions?
Way, way too wordy.
What's that?
Way too long. I think, I think your statement is more succinct and to the point.
What, what do you suggest?
No, I, I said you're, the way you worded them is better.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think what you said is fine. As I read it though, and as I, I'm not sure how the public's gonna read it, but it almost sounds like all we're doing is trying to prevent SSOs. By saying to maintain an optimal wastewater collection system, I guess that says to the public, we're trying to keep their sewer from not, we're trying to make sure their sewer goes where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, I mean, isn't it really, isn't that really the ultimate goal, not having zero SSOs? I mean, that's why we're, every year we're trying to have, achieve that zero SSOs. I mean, we, that's why we were trying to work so hard.
That's, that's, that's what we see, but the public,
Back on sewer infrastructure?
Yes, yes, we're back on that, Bob.
Yes.
Well, you know, I, I think that there are about ten, ten reasons how to maintain an optimal wastewater collection system. Sanitary sewer overflow is one. Hydraulic capacity is another. Asset management's one. Odor, odor control is one. So I, I don't think, I, I don't think our only purpose, the only stated purpose should be to prevent sanitary sewer overflow. The objective is to maintain an optimal wastewater collection system.
You're, you're, you're right, you're right, Vice President Uden. What you're describing there are action plans. So what we go on the next slide is, is a ton of action plans. So how do we achieve this objective? How do we achieve an optimal wastewater collection system in order to prevent zero SSOs? So if you go,
Oh, no, no, that, that's not the only thing, that's not the only thing that the objective should describe. All of these things, all those, all that long list is not just prevent sanitary sewer overflow.
Was it, what is it for then?
You've got odor in there, you've got asset management, you've got all, all of the tasks necessary to, you know, to maintain an optimal system.
Okay.
Hydraulic capacity, odor, prevent odors. I, I believe that our sanitary sewer overflow, you know, probably visually and to the public are very important, but if you live near a stinky pump station, that would be probably even more important to them. Anyway, I think, I, I don't think you need to list just sanitary sewer overflow.
Okay, okay. We will, we will take that back to the drawing board and, and come up more than, than just SSOs. You're right, because we, we are, we do want to prevent, we do want to prevent odors, that's true, and we, we do talk about that, I believe. Yeah, we have it, whatever, clean lift, one of the strategies, the clean lift stations, wet wells to control odors.
Yeah, I mean, those are, those are tasks, all of those things listed are tasks to, you know, to achieve what, what, maintaining an optimal system.
Right, we call, right, we call it our, our strategy. So we will conduct, we would do these strategies to achieve the objective. Okay, so, so you're right. So we, we will go back to drawing board and re, revise that, that objective, but,
Yeah, make, make it, make it short and sweet.
Sure, sure. So, so these are the strategies that we, we came up with, or is there, is there anything that we're, we're missing? Any strategies that you think we're missing?
No, I, I have a lot of suggestions. I ma, ma, maintain an asset management system. As you have about five tasks listed in this list that are all under asset management system. You know, repair, repair infrastructure. Well, anyway.
Well,
I, I, I think, I think maintaining an asset management system has about four or five of these tasks that are listed here. And they, they should become tasks on how to maintain the asset management system.
Okay, so, so you're saying, They should be supported financially too. I mean, you know, I mean, the money that, that keeps them going, it doesn't grow on trees, and it's gotta be part of the budget.
Right, Mr. President, and that's, and that's in our finance element. So that, that ties, again, remember I tell you, all these, all these elements are, are, are equally important, and they all pretty much tie into one way or another, one another. So the finance element ties into what you were talking about, Mr. President, about that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees, we gotta pay for this, and so that's where the finance element comes in. Let's, let's move on, Nolani, to the next page.
Just one, one comment.
Yes.
Go back to the objective, just leave in to maintain an optimal wastewater collection system, period. Then put that sanitary sewer overflows in your strategies.
Okay.
At some point. I, I agree with Bob. I think you keep it nice and simple, then you list all the things that work.
So maintain an optimal wastewater collection system, period.
Yeah.
And the strategy is, one of the strategies, preventing sewer, sanitary sewer overflows. Okay, very good, very good. Okay, let's, let's move on. Okay, so, so once we have the strategy, then the next, the next is, is the action plan. So this, this describes what we're gonna do to achieve our, our objectives under those strategies. So the first one, so the first one, the strategy, we said, we talked about clean the district entire mainline, and mainline, mainline system. And, and the action plan, this is for discussion, is talking to wastewater staff. We thought that, you know, we, right now, we, we clean our entire system with two crews, eighteen, with eighteen months, and as you know, we're still having considerable SSOs. Last year, we had a record of, what, I think nine SSOs. Typically, we have anywhere between two to four SSOs a year. And if our strategy is gonna have zero SSOs, then staff believes that maybe we need to hire a, a third crew, be a hybrid crew, where that crew would also operate the CCTV equipment, the closed circuit television equipment, and also help out with cleaning the system. Talking to Steve, and you can, Steve Connell's here, if you have any questions for him, we believe that if we have three crews, we can clean the entire system within twelve months. And so if we're cleaning every, the entire, twelve months, hopefully, we can achieve zero SSOs. So that's a strategy and action plan. So happy to hear your comments or suggestions on that.
I have a comment. Yeah. Steve, how many people are on a crew? Is it two-man crew?
Yeah, two per truck, and also on the plan, it says purchase combo truck to house CCTV equipment. It's actually just purchase a combo truck, and then possibly a vehicle for the CCTV equipment instead of using a trailer. So, yeah, but it's two per crew.
And then, does, do we do, currently do a CCTV operator and one wastewater maintenance worker together now, or is that something additional?
Right now, we only CCTV when it's needed. If we run into an issue, we'll get the trailer hooked up and go check it out.
So you're saying that we should have somebody as a full-time employee doing the CCTV?
Yeah, I think it would be very efficient for us, because we'd be able to keep track of, once our trucks clean, we could follow the cleaning, see if there's any issues, you know, because a lot of plumbers are out there putting out those liners that protrude into our main. I know we televise every, what, ten years? But if we can televise daily or a couple days a week, I think it'd be beneficial for us.
So sometimes the CT, CCTV operator would be doing work just as a crew, and then only use them when you needed to?
Well, I was thinking if we do hire a third crew, it would consist of a experienced operator CCTV, and then a regular wait, maintenance worker. And maybe they could clean two days of that week, and the other two days they can CCTV of what they've done that week, and follow the other trucks if we need to.
Are, are they on a four-day work week right now?
Um, well, we all switch. We're on the nine-eighty schedule.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and if this is okay with the board, then we would do, we would bring this back in the next budget cycle, the twenty-one-twenty-two budget, so, right, so that's, you know, we would budget appropriately. Right now, we don't have the money to budget this, the, 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 the additional truck or the additional crew. So we would discuss this again during the budget process.
That's what I'm going to ask about, the budget end of it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you, that's why, if you look at the completion timeline, so way on the right, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, so that's the twenty-two-twenty-three budget. So that's the new budget that you would, you would adopt.
I see.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I have some comments here. This is a major policy decision. It should not be, it should not be in strategic plan until it's been vetted with the board. You know, I, I think it's a potentially good, good strategy to think through, but I think the, we need, we need, we need an agenda report, you know, that expands on what Steve's talking about. We've historically had near no sewer overflows, and we've cleaned on a ten-year cycle. There's a lot of, a lot of issues that I think need to be addressed, like, do we clean every line segment, every, you know, every, every whenever? Or, or, because a lot of agencies, you know, they, they don't clean some for ten years, and they clean some, you know, like on a hotspot issue. This has to be vetted through the board, you know, and not just put in the strategic plan and say, okay, you know, this is a good idea, let's, let's do it. And maybe twenty-twenty-two is the time to do it, but I would like to see this vetted. I don't think it should be the first strategy in here. That the strategy should be analyzed the proper cleaning cycle, and let it go with that until, until the board has approved a policy change, a major policy, financial and staffing change.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Does, does the board agree with Vice President Uden?
I would say that's probably the smartest way to go.
Yeah. Now, what, what about the cost, existing cost of, do we have two trucks or one truck?
Currently, we have two combination units.
Okay. And, but before that, we had a problem with one that we had to get rid of?
Yeah, we, yeah, we got rid of it.
Yeah.
So now we have two.
But, you know, that's not a cheap proposition, obviously, to bring in another truck and crew. I mean, we're talking some serious money.
Exactly, and, and that's why we would do it in the next budget cycle, because it is a lot of money, absolutely. So we'd like, like Vice President Uden said, we'd vet it out with the cost, and, yeah, because a combo truck is close to half a million dollars.
Yeah.
You know?
What would be wrong with leaving it in for now, being it's twenty-two we're talking? And then, so, in the future, study sessions sometime, talking about this and really come to some conclusions, because we are out of budget.
Yeah, the strategy should be analyzed, proper cleaning cycle for the collecting person, and not the details on, you know, staff vision, which may be the perfect vision.
Okay.
It has to be vetted with the board.
We'd have, the discussion on, on the finances of it too should be included.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes.
I mean, we, we purchased the CCTV equipment based on a whole different assumption than, than what, what this, this is proposing. It may, this may be the correct strategy in the future to do, but it shouldn't be just brought into the strategic plan and say, okay, you know, we'll do this in twenty-twenty-two if the board approves.
Okay, okay. Good suggestions. We, we can revise that, and then we can bring back, in a study session, this idea to be vetted and get further directions from the board.
Yeah, when, just whenever, you know, whenever you get the, the agenda report together is fine.
Okay, okay. Let's, let's move on. So this was, again, a strategy, maintain the asset management system. So under this action plan, we said the EEC will incorporate our new composite manholes to be recorded with locations that, with GPS, date and install depth, et cetera, into our CMS, which they're not doing right now. And then also, they would incorporate the city storm drain maps into CMS. Now, that can be a little problematic, because the storm drain maps the city has are quite challenging, and I think Steve can attest to that, or Steve, you can probably go into more details on, on their storm drain map. So I don't, you know, I think that's, what's the, I don't, what's the, action plan we have is twenty-twenty-three, maybe we could still keep that in there and, and work with the city and encourage them to get more, new storm drain maps.
Well, I, I think this is, should be the first strategy, or, or one, one of the main strategies, and, you know, replacing infrastructure, the, the, the four or five, there's four strategies I think should come underneath this as tasks, and that is replace the infrastructure before reaching the end of life cycle, repair the, repair infrastructure where deficiencies have been identified, inventory equipment and replacement parts, at, you know, assess the capacity of the wastewater system. I think those are all subsets of the asset management plan.
Okay. If, if you can, if you can email me those comments,
Yeah, I would.
Be helpful.
Okay.
So moving on to the audit update, SSMP, as you know, we do this every two years. Our next audit is coming up this year, twenty-twenty, so that's why we have, every two, we said ongoing, but this, actually, the completion time should be, should say twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-four should be the dates on there, so we'll change that. So every two years, we would do, we do the audits. And then,
That because of regulations?
Yes, correct. That's correct, correct. In fact, I think this year, we have to, I, I think, we, as, we have to certify it every five years, and this is the fifth year we have to, so I think we had to certify it this year.
Okay.
And then perform, prevent a maintenance at all list stations. This is what we're doing right, right now. With the exception, we're installing reverse face switches, that's something new that we added to our annual inspections. But we, we, we do annual inspections on all our stations. We, we, we do PMs on our Godwinds and as well the generators. As, as you say, the, the, the completion time is ongoing on this.
Wow. Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, fine.
So, next slide, please.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Okay, so here's, here's what you were talking about earlier, Vice President Uden, about replacing the infrastructure before reaching the end of the life cycle. How we do that, the action plans, you know, we replace in line our force main, our force mains. We continue to replace the brick manholes. We replace, this is a new project, we need to replace ductile iron pipe and sewer system, we're gonna be doing that, I think, next fiscal year. You know, I got twenty-twenty-two, it might be done next fiscal, I'll have to double check on that one. But so, here's some of the, what we do for replacing our infrastructure.
Well, we, the big one is, you know, it's the replace force mains and we also are replacing pump stations.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, our, almost our whole CIP program revolves around, you know, this subpart of the asset management system. What, what, how, how, how can you say replace ductile iron pipe? Is that a master plan idea, or?
Well, no, this, we, we know of, when Rob was here, we, we know of pipes that, that are corroded. And some of them are actually on our hotspots too. So they're, they're heavily corroded and, and we need to replace them. So that's why we have this on this action plan, we, we gotta replace them because they're, they're heavily corroded.
Well, I think you should say replace or repair, because I think, I think the master plan is working towards, you know, how to deal with this, and, and maybe some of them just can be lying. I, I thought that's what they were saying.
Well, I think, I, yes, I think, I, I think relining is kind of, is a way of replacing it, it's just a different technique. We don't have a lot of ductile iron piping in our system.
Yeah.
But I, I do recall when Rob was here, this is a great concern he had, and so that's why we, we budgeted, it's in our budget to, to replace those ductile iron pipes, which will start next fiscal year.
Yeah, I like the, to say replace, because to me, repair is like a Band-Aid system, and you sooner And you sooner later, you're going to have to do it anyway.
Yeah, that, it's like rehab. You could, you could use the word rehab ductile iron pipe. Um, and that would include both replace and repair. The master plan, the master plan is trying to address this.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, let's see. So then re, repair infrastructure deficiency has been identified. Uh, replace worn iron manhole sets with new composite and record into CMS. These are the ones that, you know, we, um, the, the ones that we grade on a one to five. And we try to replace them as soon as possible. So cars don't get, um, get, get damaged. Um, and we have a new technique, a new program that will be rolling on real soon using artificial intelligence that, that we're very excited to share with the board here real soon. Um, but, uh, this is very important, um, part of our, of our infrastructure to replace. And then, um, calcium removal, um, it's an issue we're, we're dealing with. Not quite as bad as some of the other districts are experiencing calcium. Um, and it's very difficult to remove calcium from, from the, the pipes. But it's something we, we need to, um, focus on during the next five years.
God, is, is the word, is, are these replaced iron manhole covers?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I think covers is a better word. You know, I didn't know whether they were the manhole, you know, the brick manhole. Anyway, I would suggest.
Okay. Good, 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 good suggestion. We will do that. Any, any questions before I move on? Okay. So the next, next strategy is enforce the district's fog program. Uh, as you know, we have E E C. There are inspectors, so they'll conduct inspections at, at restaurants. That'll continue. And then, um, we mix clean lift stations, wet wells to, to control odors. Uh, we do that on a, on a monthly basis. So we'll continue doing that. And then, um, monitor inflow after significant weather events. Uh, we had this in our last plan, so we thought it's important to continue doing this. As you know, we're, we're working with the fairgrounds because we, we know that's a, a hotspot that's, that's causing inflow. So, um, performing dye testing when needed and smoke testing in areas that are legal connections, we will, we will perform that as, uh, ongoing. Um.
God, I would suggest on the clean lift stations, basically, I would just, I would say the strategy is, is, um, to control um, collection system odor.
Say that again?
Um, on, on the clean lift stations and wet wells. I, I think that we need to say that more generally, and that would be just control collection system odors.
Okay.
Wet wells is, is one thing, putting in downspouts is another thing. Um, you know, there, I think there's more, I, it's, well, there's more to that than than meets the eye the way you said it.
Okay, okay. We can, we can work that out. Not a problem. Um, Noel, Mr. Mosher had some comments on, on these action plans, I think, didn't he?
Yes, just, uh, one comment regarding fats, oils and grease. He, he was asking for clarification if the warning is fats, comma, oil and grease, or possibly fats, comma, oils and grease. That was it.
This grammar stuff. He's, he's.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. Let's, let's move on. Next slide, please, Noel.
Yes.
All right. So next strategy is, is close circuit television pipeline. Uh, this is what, um, Steve was talking about earlier. If we had our, our third crew, uh, we would, you know, televise up to two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand feet a year. Um, again, this could be vetted out as we talked earlier. We could revise this action plan and then, uh, use as, uh, as part of our analysis and show this to the board and get direction.
Yeah.
Um, incorporate CCTV program granite XP. Can you, can you explain what that is, um, Steve, the granite XP? Is that software?
Yeah, it's a software we use for, um, our CCTV. Um, we can incorporate into our C M S. So the granite XP records, you know, all the video and also the report. And our city works is able to be incorporated into this. So if the guys run into issues, they can click on the line and see the latest video on it if they're hitting something. So that would be, that would be awesome if we could get that incorporated into it.
Okay. Okay, very good. And then obviously we want to continue providing our education training of staff. It's extremely important for our wastewater staff to, to continue their education and training. And, and so we listed, um, some training on, on safety as well as professional development here. And, and I think, uh, the board is very familiar with, um, C W A and SARBS and Tri-State Conference. Cause we, we tend those regularly. So I think that's, that's very important to continue, continue training and development. And then the last one or the next one, inventory equipment and replacement parts. So we are working with E E C on developing an inventory control software or program at the warehouse at the yard where we can, um, do a better job of tracking our supplies and parts. So basically the program, how the program will work is that when they, um, every, all our, all our parts supplies will be, will be scanned with a barcode. And so then they just scan it when they check it out. And then it, it keeps track of our inventory and it will flag us, like a flag Steve saying, hey, you're low on this inventory. Start ordering it. That way it'll prevent, that'll prevent when staff comes to the yard looking for a part and there's nothing there, right? Maybe they forgot to tell us, they forgot to tell us to order some of their parts. It's a better way to, to, um, um, keep sure, ensuring our supplies are adequately stocked. And then also as we acquire more vehicles and equipment, um, it's, it's going to be important for us to track their preventive maintenance. And so we, we're going to want to have some kind of a fleet software in place. So we can track what has been done and what needs to be done. Um, also that software has, obviously money comes to that. So we're, we're looking at budgeting that in the twenty one, twenty two, uh, fiscal year. Um, but, uh, those are also very important to have to, uh, for wastewater. Any, any questions?
That looks good.
Okay, let's move on.
Scott, there were comments from Mr. Mosher on, on this page. Uh, the first comment was that the first strategy seems to contain components with a definite end date, hiring and purchasing and ongoing components like cleaning each year. Listing only an end date makes it sound like the cleaning is being presented as a one and done strategy. His next comment is E E C will incorporate new composite manholes. Um, he'd like to add in, into the computerized maintenance management system, so spell out C M M S, to be recorded within, look, to be recorded with location with GPS, date of installed depth, et cetera. Without revision, this seems to say E E C is responsible for physically adding composite manholes to the sewer infrastructure. His next comment is perform internal audits of S S M P every two years. Alternatively, given the statement that the strategy is to audit and update the S S M P, delete of S S M P and say perform internal audits every two years and update if needed. Last comment is in last strategy, use consistent spelling, settle on either preventative. Apparently the more common spelling or preventative. Also, does twenty mean all of the pump? Or is it lift stations? If so, not say all instead of twenty and comment.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to the next slide, please. All right. So, um, assess the capacity of the entire system. This is, Mr., uh, this is what you said, uh, Vice President Uden, by hydraulic study and, and, and the, um, sewer master plan.
Yeah.
Um, and then Steve, if you can go on to E E C to create two work orders that need to be completed on an annual basis before the rainy season starts. What, uh, what do you mean by that? Can you, can you go more detail?
Sure. Yeah. One list we have are the manholes that are in the low lying areas. So when the streets flood, our manholes are totally underwater. Um, so we have that list where we're supposed to plug and silicone seal these. The other list, um, is much larger, but these are, um, manholes that are still susceptible to the, um, flow. So we'll just plug them anyways. Um, but the guys, they plug everything right now anyways. When they go out doing routine cleaning, they're plugging the holes with little, um, the rubber plugs or plastic plugs. So we just like to get these two work orders created. So our operator who's, Joel's going to be responsible for this. Uh, before the rainy season starts, he's going to plan on when to start this. Have these manholes plugged and sealed before the rain even starts. To count, you know, so we can, um, cut down on the inflow to the O C S D.
Pretty good. Very good.
I, I have a comment.
Yes.
Do we have the, are we allowed to do that at, uh, the fairgrounds and maybe Newport Mason School District sites? Because I think that a lot of inflows coming from those sites. And I don't think that they have any plugs in them.
Just a thought. That's the problem with the fairgrounds. We don't know where though. That's, that's the problem. And, and we, we're having a hard time getting the sewer map, sewer plans or storm drain plans. Um, because quite frankly, they, they don't know where they are. They don't know if they have accurate plans. Um, so we can't plug. We don't know where, where they're connecting or where, or where the water's coming in. And that's why we need to smoke test it, but we can't smoke test it unless we have, um, the sewer plant. So it's kind of like a, you know.
Um, what I was thinking is ask their permission to go on and plug all of their manholes. And same with Newport Mason, because there's a lot of manholes that are in the fields. That, you know, in the, in the athletic fields at the Stasi and in the parking lots. Just a thought. I mean, that's something you should consider.
Okay, sure, sure. We can, we can, we can definitely. That's, it can't hurt to ask. Absolutely.
I have a question. Do you think that this can, Steve, can you, you think this can be completed by twenty twenty? By the end, being that, you know, you've got two different lists of, you know?
Yeah, we've already done it for this year, so we're good.
Oh, you are? Okay. Thank you.
Maybe that should be changed to ongoing, Steve?
Well, I think it should be annual.
Or annually?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We'll change it to annually.
Okay, that's better.
And then, uh, next is, uh, the, our new C M S D inspector will perform inspections for public works project. And, and that's, uh, about, about long. We'll start that on July one. Or, or maybe a little after July because we still got to, um, um, acquire his vehicle. Um, and that'll start on July one, the new fiscal year. So, um, um, but, uh, come July, he, he will be certified and, and ready to start our inspection. So he'll do inspecting public works projects and, and, uh, uh, R B H will do, uh, private development. And then next we have, um, make our, our G I S data remote accessible. Um, isn't, Steve, isn't it already accessible?
Yeah, um, I wasn't really sure about this one. Um, but yeah, it's accessible out in the field.
Okay. Well, maybe we can, maybe we can take this one off then.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, incentivize residents of property owners to maintain their private sewer laterals. Um, this would be the SER program. Um, so any questions on this, on this slide?
Scott, we did have more comments from Mr. Mosher on this slide.
All right, thanks.
Um, the first comment is, is the first CCTV action plan supposed to have an end date or to be ongoing? Under the next strategy, doesn't C E U stand for continuing education units? Shouldn't contact education unit or contact education hours? If there is such a thing, the abbreviated C E H. Might there be other opportunities outside of these conferences for wastewater personnel to interact more directly with their peers? At similar local districts to learn, share best practices? For example, organizing an Orange County forum. Tri-state conference available for C E U's is missing the verb necessary to make it an action plan, such as make Tri-State Conference available for C E U's or keep Tri-State Conference available for C E U's. C W E A Annual Conference available for C E U's seems to be duplicate plan, plans stated two lines earlier. In last action plan, again, preventative or preventative. Also, I don't understand what basic inspection terminals on vehicles refers to and comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hey Scott, I have a question.
Yes.
On Bow. How often would he be performing inspections?
Well, it's whenever we have, um, uh, the inspections are required. Um, so we have a, a, a new online inspection program, uh, scheduling, sketch, inspection scheduling program going to be, um, hopefully coming online by, by next month, where we're going to require contractors to, to schedule their inspections through online. So they go like on our website or go online and they'll schedule it. And, and then, um, Bow will, will, will get that and, and he'll, um, coordinate a, a date and time when to go out and inspect. Um, right now, I know Bow, Bow's, um, here too. It, maybe, do you have an estimate how, how many, how often you'll be inspecting? I mean, right now it's pretty slow out there on public works projects, isn't it?
Yeah, right now we don't have a lot of, uh, public works project, but, um, I think I would be coordinating with, um, the engineer as well. Uh, what, what's critical and what needs to be inspected for those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, uh, my other question is, Bow, are you ready to go for, to perform inspections and feel adequately you can do it?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, I, I do feel like I, uh, depending on the projects, I mean, understanding that all projects are different. And there are things that you need to pay attention for. So I, I mean, I would definitely feel I need to, um, coordinate with engineers and see what's crucial or what's critical for each project.
Sounds good.
Can I ask Bow a question? You, you were working with Rob. Are, are you still working with, uh, your R B H? And, and have you, is, is, are you getting a certification in this or?
Yeah, well, currently right now, I'm taking my last course at Santiago Canyon College for the Public Works Inspector's, uh, certificate. Uh, also, um, and they asked for, for that as well. Um, so with Rob, um, well, a, actually for Mike, um, ever since he's kind of just started, uh, we were, we probably met once or twice, but after that, the COVID, um, that happened, uh, I haven't met with him, um, since. And, um, I did speak to him about it. And once there's projects that would come up, then I would like to go, um, meet with him and talk about it. But we just haven't, haven't had any projects coming up lately. So.
Yeah, good.
Scott, I have a question. You mentioned getting Bow a vehicle.
Yes.
Uh, I'd prefer it to be an electric vehicle, but I don't want him getting a Tesla by any way, shape or form.
No.
Okay. No Teslas.
Yes, no worry about, yes, uh, um, he will have an electric vehicle and yes, uh, and, and no, it would not be a Tesla. It's, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just being silly, obviously, but is there a chance that, I'm not sure in the interim, uh, how, how much Ed uses his vehicle? Is there a possible of a, of Bow using Ed's when he's not? Is that possible?
Uh, anything's possible. Um, but.
And I'm talking about an interim basis. I'm not looking.
Yeah, it's just, um, I, I, we, we budget for the vehicle. So I suggest, you know, just, um, buying another vehicle for the inspections and just because, you know, they're, they're both going to have their, their own supplies in there. Um.
Yeah.
So I would, I would just keep it separate.
Okay. Uh, again, no Tesla, Bow, sorry.
Hey, Mike, that's the number one selling vehicle in the United States right now.
Must be a lot of rich people.
Uh, how about a used Ram four?
They, they, they overtake the Verdi. I actually have a Jeep Wrangler he can use.
A Ford, a Ford or Jeep.
Uh, next slide on Ollie.
You know, another thought is that, uh, some of these car agencies are willing to, uh, give you a car, lease you a car out at their own cost, just to have their name on it along with ours. Anyway, that's just a thought.
Very good, very good. Um, Mr. President, it's going on ten thirteen right now. You know, my goal was to do this for about two hours, maybe with a break. Um, do you mind if, if, if we take a, a short five minute break right now?
I think this is a good time. So why don't we take a five minute break and then we'll get back after it.
So we'll be back at, um, what, uh, ten, ten twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Are we back, Scott?
Um, I think so, it's uh.
Scared me.
Right, it's.
We're back.
I'm back.
The Lonnie's at ten twenty?
It is ten seventeen, we have three more minutes.
Okay.
Is there a Citizens Advisory Committee this month?
Yes, next week, Wednesday at six PM, Arlene.
And, okay, that's the thirteen.
Correct.
And now is that in person or is it gonna be on the machine on?
It will be on Zoom.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
The Lonnie, uh let everybody know that they've been selected again, or?
Yes, we did.
Did any, you have any uh negative responses?
Uh no negative responses, sir.
Okay, sounds good. Not everybody's here yet, right?
Not yet, we have two more minutes.
Yeah, Lonnie, tell us when it's ten twenty, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Arlene, were you talking about the committees uh meeting next week or?
The Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
On Wednesday, the thirteenth, on Zoom. Yeah. Jim, did you hear about uh Mary Alice Wilson?
No.
She passed away at a hundred years old last week.
Wow, that was uh the Wilson who owned that.
The mayor.
Yeah.
Of Wilson, who had the running company.
I went to high school with his son.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, that's why.
What?
Yeah.
Is that Randy Wilson?
Yeah.
So did I, I went to high school with him too, Jim. That's right, you did.
You're owning up. Yeah, a hundred years of, wow.
Mary's, Mary's mom is ninety-nine and.
Is she really? And she's still?
A hundred percent.
Whoa.
Yeah.
I remember you went back to Arizona for her nine ninety-eight.
Ten twenty, Mr. President.
Okay, is everybody here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's rock and roll.
Thank you, Mr. President, so we'll proceed on to the next element, which is solid waste. And so our the staffs came up, the objective is to provide an efficient solid waste collection system to reduce waste and increase diversion while maintaining environmental integrity. So comments, the board.
Looks okay, yeah.
I would just add, maybe provide an efficient and affordable solid waste collection system. Just a thought.
What's, what's, what's the rest of the board think?
I like it the way it is.
Think you should consider that, it's, you know.
Say that again, will you, we uh what?
Did you say, Mike?
Go ahead, Mike.
Just to provide an efficient and affordable or just to to put a monetary moniker in there somewhere that shows that we're doing it for the best value, because we pride ourselves, you know, we we say we're gonna be in the middle of the county, and I think, I think that's should be part of our objective is to continue to maintain the affordability aspect of it, that's all.
Sounds good, okay.
Yeah, it might be good.
Let's, let's proceed to the next slide, please, Lonnie. Okay, so here's our strategies um to achieve that objective. Uh I'm not gonna go down to every one of them, but uh there's anything you we're missing, please let me know, we can consider that.
Anybody spot anything?
I don't know.
I would, I would um on buy the program for collecting large items. I I don't, we already provide one, I think it just continue the program for collecting large items.
Yeah, I think um our, you'll see in one of the action plan, uh we do provide the program, but the the goal was to increase um participation in the program.
Does it say that?
No, well, it's one of our action plans, so so to, we we do, some of these programs we're we're providing right now. But it's 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 a continual to ensure that we achieve our objective.
Well, I think the word provide should be continued anyway.
Okay.
Didn't work out.
Okay. Anything else?
So we're not doing sharps anymore?
Uh no, it's there, it's this, it's the second bullet point, collect sharps and pharmaceuticals.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, and and we got the flags in there?
You know, I don't think we do have that in there, so um.
I couldn't find it.
I think, yeah, that's good, cut, we'll we'll put that in there too, um the US flag program, that's good, that's a good idea, yes, we will put that in there. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to the next slide, Lonnie. Okay, so here is our our strategy along with our action plan, so the first one's focus on journaling less contaminated materials. Uh I know, I know we had this discussion in the past, so, you know, reduce contamination, the curbside recycling, organic programs, that's something we need to to work on to increase our diversion, uh because if it's contaminated, this is going, this is going to dump. So um we talk, I believe we talked about this in the past, and this is something we need to continue working towards.
Yeah, I agree, I think we need to stay with it.
Okay. The next one is um collect sharps pharmaceuticals, so the action plan is to explore other uh drop-off boxes um with for the pharmaceuticals um in the sharps, but I believe uh now Nabilas here, Nabila, correct me wrong, we're limited to the sharps or the pharmaceuticals?
The pharmaceuticals, we can only dispose of them in public uh agencies, we cannot place a drop box at pharmacies.
Right, so we, but we can expand our sharps box elsewhere, right?
Correct, uh Lou had given the suggestion of placing them at City Hall or fire stations.
Okay, okay, very good.
I have a question, Scott, on that, can you check to see if the senior centers are available for that?
Uh we do have a drop box at the senior center currently, it is not advertised. The senior center, because of its location, did not want to advertise that it was collecting pharmaceuticals, so it's just for the use of the seniors that use it. Or that uses senior center.
So the senior center is included in that definition of a public facility, right?
Yes.
Yes, and we currently have one there.
Okay, great, thank you, Nabila.
I had a quick question, uh did we used to have Stevens Pharmacy?
Correct, uh that we used to have a sharps box and a pharmaceutical box, but since the pharmacy closed.
There's a pharmacy there now.
There is a new pharmacy, yes.
Yeah, so I thought maybe you should consider going back to them to do it.
Oh, yeah, so you're looking to that.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that with us, we didn't know that, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so moving on, um provide convenient method for disposing household hazardous waste, which we do already, but um it's I I guess you could say it's it's not taken off as as we thought it would be, so uh you know, maybe our our action plan is is to increase participation by five percent. Increase it by five percent, so we'll come up a plan and present that to the board and what to do to how how we think we can increase it by five percent.
Five percent of what?
Of uh what we're currently doing right now. And then the next, the next one is quite interesting, biomass, if you're not, we call it, it's called biomass, but what it is really is is uh it's really basically an incinerator, it's 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 burning trash. Um and uh we've been approached by CRNR as as another way of diverting trash. Um they are doing that right now out in um in Riverside County area. Um and so we've already approached them, and so this is something we definitely bring back to the board for consideration, there are some some strings attached, because Cal Recycle doesn't identify biomass really as as a, you can't, you can't use more than ten percent to incinerate your trash, um and that's something maybe we need to work on, maybe CSDA can help us, or um um Swana can help us um maybe amend that legislation, but um Nabila, do you have anything to add on on biomass?
No, it's just uh exploring the feasibility of implementing the program, it it does come at an extra cost.
Yeah.
Um and there are only certain materials that can be taken to that new, it's at their AD facility, but it's a separate um technology, separate machine.
Yeah, it's it's quite interesting, so we're really excited to share this with you and as soon as we get more information, but like Nabila said.
I'm assuming AQMD's approval approves it.
Oh, they they're they're already, they have approved it, in fact, uh they're already operation, in fact, I don't think correct me wrong, aren't they under a different AQMD jurisdiction than than ours?
Yes, because it's in, is that Riverside County?
Diamond Bar.
Yeah, no, there it's the 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 these incinerators, they're in a different jurisdictions than the the Diamond Bar.
Oh, I see.
Hey Scott, I've actually talked to one of the staff members at that at AQMD for Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. And they they, she had told me that there were some concerns over it, but that they were apparently pretty comfortable with what CRNR was doing. It it AQMD is fully aware of what they're doing.
Oh, yeah.
And she didn't seem to indicate there were any negatives with it, so I I I think we're probably in good stead with them.
I I think, you know, again, this will be a really good discussion, the study session, uh because the 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 big issue is gonna be cost, you know, and you know, what's the comfort level, maybe do we do another survey, a citizen survey, like before we roll out the organics program, say, are you comfortable with this kind of rate increase? And then let's say they are, and we wanna do, then maybe we need to do some town hall meetings like we did with organics, I mean, this is, this is a if we go down this road, this is a hu- it's another change in in behavior, another change in the way uh we dispose our trash and and uh it would definitely need some some serious discussion and public input.
Well, I, based on what I, the study I did with it, the or the research I did with it, it'll get us way above our our compliance ratio, if we if we can get into this biomass technology, it'll put us way above our our diversion rate almost instantly. I think it's something we really need to look at.
Yeah, absolutely, we're, I'm seeing Nabila really excited to to share this with you, we just need to get some more uh information and and um and then we'll be ready to send, give this to you for a discussion.
Well, what file mass are we talking about?
Uh it's 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 basically burning trash, any kind of trash.
Okay, what 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 particular parts of trash are we talking about?
Anything, uh other.
We're talking about uh newspapers, cardboard that's contaminated, that can't be recycled. Items such as like the swap containers that have plastic and cardboard, those cannot be recycled because of the mixed plastic and cardboard, so items like that that don't have a market would be taken to um through their biomass technology.
I'm not so sure that this will get us anywhere, but but I'm 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 anxious to see what the, you know, what what the agenda report comes up with.
Yeah, 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 exactly, that's at least have an open mind and and talk about it, absolutely.
No, I, hey Bob, I, again, I I should have said this, but going back to Scott's initial statement about getting uh Cal Recycle to recognize it is the first step. If if Cal Recycle recognizes what we're diverting through biomass, I think it'll make a huge difference for us.
Can I get us to seventy-five percent?
Uh again, we don't, I can't tell you right right now, we'd have to um crunch those numbers and bring and present it to you, I I can't affirmatively say yes or no at this point.
Can can you, uh are there any other agencies that do this currently?
No, no.
You're one of the first?
It's like the organic cycling, will we be like one of the first?
Okay, I think it's something to look into.
Absolutely.
I agree.
But you know, CRNR already has the infrastructure in place.
Yes, they do.
Well, um you know, in the staff report includes what what parts of the uh the trash are there. You know, we we know what percentages they're gonna tell us are there, because you know, they they do the uh they do the waste stream, or they do the the waste characterization studies and there, I can't imagine there's very much could go to this thing, but you know, well, well, I I'm anxious to see.
Okay, very good, let's move on, um the next one is, as we do provide a large uh large, collecting large items, but uh the action plan here is to to increase our participation by five percent. So um again, is if we can get more white goods out of the um out of the stream than than, you know, white goods can be recycled and diverted away from the land um the landfill, that's all good, and if we can increase that by five percent, that's a good thing. Next is um uh improving our waste stream and recycling reporting, uh and we're we're aware about this um regarding um the accuracy and and reliability of the data. And so um we believe we need to conduct more waste characterization studies, um so that's where this action plan comes, so we can be more more confident in the numbers. Any questions before I move on to the next slide? Okay, Lonnie, next slide, please. So incentivizing sustainability internally, um we do this already, you know, we we. So exemplifying sustainability internally, um, we do this already, you know, we we purchase and acquire sustainable products, you know, like the tote bags. Um, uh, what else do we buy? Um, excuse me, um, help me out here. Gina, what else do we buy here that's sustainable?
Dog poop bags.
We buy comfortable uh, foodware for any events that we do, the nap plates.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Um, then recycle green waste and food scraps, uh, but soon as uh, um, we get to, hopefully get to stage four uh, the governor's plan with COVID nineteen, we can start implementing compost giving away events, but that that will uh, continue to be an action plan. And then um, enhance code enforcement presence. Um, it's something we might want to consider is, um, do we want to enhance it? In other words, is it a full-time job? Um, uh, you know, um, do do we, um, or do we want to switch, you know, switch hours? I, you know, something we need to explore uh, further. So that's something we bring back to the board. And then the next one is more of an internal uh, action plan is to um, uh, is to focus on decreasing response time uh, when issuing, uploading target response times to customer inquiries. So when when customers uh, submit their inquiries to GOV uh, Gov Outreach, um, we, that's one of the reasons why to force measurements, our our customer satisfaction is a little bit low, is because uh, we're not, we need to respond to them um, in in a quicker fashion. Is that correct, Nalani? Is there anything else on that?
No, that's correct.
Okay. So, any questions on that?
Is that a mixture of on-the-phone inquiries as well as uh, the other types that they would be asking you right there?
No, I do know, I think most of our inquiries are from Gov Outreach, aren't they?
That is correct.
Yeah, so we don't get any phone calls, do we, from that, on this?
Uh, we, when we do receive phone calls, those phone calls are inputted into the Gov Outreach. That way we have a method to track the requests that are coming through.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Very good. Okay, let's move on. Next slide. Okay, so next is our third element, which is partnership. And the objective is to cultivate and maintain collaborative relationships with other organizations to achieve desired goals and outcomes.
I would, I would just add to proactively cultivate and maintain.
Okay. Any any other comments?
That's a good, a good idea.
Yeah, we're all for it.
Okay, let's let's move on. And here's our, these are our strategies. Um, we'll go to all of them. Is there, is there anything that you think we need to add? Or uh, amend?
Scott, where would the battery program come in? That we go to the schools or, you know, battery contest?
Um, it's if it's not here, it probably, it could be an outreach too. It could be a public outreach.
Okay, because we we might keep that in mind.
Yeah. Let's see if we go through it. If it's not here, I believe it's in community outreach.
Okay, okay.
Okay, no, no, no questions or comments. We'll we'll move on. Uh, Nalani, next slide, please. Okay, so, so the build relationship with local agencies, small businesses and nonprofit agencies to promote sustainable practices. So our action plan was to create and implement a sustainability checklist for businesses, also qual- can be highlighted through CMSD outreach channels. And Nabilah, can can you, this was a great idea. Can you kind of go in more details of what you're envisioning on this program?
Yeah, so establishing a checklist for businesses that where we can promote it, they can contact us and we'll give them a rating um, based on do they offer disposable products for residents instead of single-use plastics? Do they offer uh, reusable silverware at their restaurants instead of single-use plastics? Do they offer bins that already encourage the resident to recycle and separate their food waste, their recycling and their trash? And just depending how sustainable we they are, we can promote them in our social media outlets, our newsletter.
Okay. And then and then um, was the next one yours too, establish relationship with local business to promote CMSD programs?
Yes, so as we want to encourage or promote our programs, we can one of the ideas was for the large item collections, we can um, partner with local businesses such as furniture stores. When residents go in to buy a new sofa, the customer service associates at the furniture store can tell them about their program to get rid of their old sofas. And that way, it's kind of closing a loop and it's, um, we're using the businesses in our community to promote our program.
Awesome, very good. Any any questions on those two action plans?
Yes, when we have, if we went to a furniture store, how do they get rid of their furniture that they are taking over? Like their large item? We we don't, we have to pay for large item pickup in the long run?
I know, the large items are included in our contract. They don't come at an extra cost.
Okay, I just wanted, you know, I thought there might be a cost to us for them picking it up.
No, it's included in our rates.
How do furniture stores get rid of it now?
Uh, furniture stores don't. I don't believe they would have to go through their own hauler to dispose any items.
There's some private individuals who have trucks that come and and pick uh, pick up stuff from uh, furniture stores.
I'm just concerned about CRNR having additional costs for programs that we we haven't really had before.
Oh, this, this idea is that we wouldn't pick up the items from the furniture store because that's a business. This would, um, we would just use, ask them to promote our program. So if I'm a customer, it's a resident and I go buy furniture, they would, you know, have our flyer, have something handy where they can tell them, hey, get rid of your old one by just calling CMSD or calling CRNR to pick up your old furniture that you want to get rid of.
Yeah.
Should, should we discuss this with CRNR before we start this as a program?
Yes, we can.
I think that'd be wise, just in case they have concerns about that.
Sure, definitely, definitely, keep them in the loop. Um, moving on, next is, um, we do this right now, partner agencies with uh, our tours, uh, SEPA, workshop and tour to SEPA. So again, when um, uh, we get to that stage four, um, uh, from Governor Newsom's, we can implement SEPA again. Um, the next, the next action plan is is brand new, um, something we've never done before, but the thinking was maybe we can uh, partner with Orange County Real Estate Associations or with local real estate agents to notify us when new residents move in, and that way we can give them our 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 new residence package and and get them informed of who we are and what services we provide. So um, I remember this was, this was brought up before in the past, and maybe this is a good time to start consider implementing this type of program.
I think all Realtors, you know, uh, they have websites and and they do hand out a lot of materials when you buy a house, so.
Right.
We should just have a package that the Realtor hands to the new owner. I feel, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great, great. And then the next strategy is to get more involved with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I know we've done that in the past, it's kind of way recently, so thought let me get more involved with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and that is to, you know, add uh, district events and programs on on their website, which in mobile, which we do now. Um, the big change though, and this was actually recommended by Lou, um, and that was to advertise businesses in our newsletter, um, you know, to generate some additional revenue. Um, you know, if if the businesses learn that our newsletter goes to over twenty-three thousand homes, that might pique their interest. Um, the only caveat with that is that, you know, we don't want our newsletter to be just a full ad newspaper, right? You know, we gotta kind of do tactfully and tastefully. So something we gotta think about. But this could be an opportunity to, one, uh, establish a good partnership with Chamber of Commerce and two, generate some additional revenues.
Scott, another thing that I have always wondered why, when everybody has their seal except us in, from the Chamber of Commerce, when I get all the emails, when I get any magazines, any newsletters, everybody's in there with their seal as an organization. We're a member of that Chamber of Commerce and we never have our seal on there. And that bothers me. I I think we should.
Okay.
And you know, not only that, but uh, I know that I I work with the chamber and I'm on the governmental affairs committee there. And they're willing to do anything they can to track, to be able to advertise for us. So we in turn, I think, should do that for them too. Maybe we could do, maybe we could do some trade-offs too.
Yep.
Arlene, where did, where did they move to? Was it Triangle Square?
Yes, they're at Triangle Square. They're on the first floor, so they're facing Harvard Boulevard. Yeah, great, great office. Wow.
Arlene, isn't it in the courtyards?
Yeah, no, they're in Triangle Square.
Right, in Triangle Square?
Yeah.
Hey Scott, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Say, because my son moved from Reading Street to Madera Street. Does he have to notify the sanitary district of the change? Or how does that, how do you know that information?
Uh, Nabilah, do you know that answer?
Uh, no, we would not. We would get that information from the county once a year. If he purchased a home, um, we'll just get those records in July. Depending when he bought it, for when we place the assessment charges, charges, if the person is just renting, then there's not, we don't track renters. We track APNs and homes.
So you do get that information from the county?
Yes, we purchase it once a year.
Okay, I'll just double check it, make sure he's online.
No, everything's fine.
Great, thank you, Nabilah. So moving on, so the next strategy is cro- um, cross-promote public outreach content and that applies to district services areas. And our action plan for that was to coordinate promotions of awareness campaigns with public agencies within the district service area. So um, public agencies like being obviously the city, Mesa Water District, School District, um, uh, OCC, um, those, the fairgrounds, you know, the public agencies. Uh, continuously monitor relative information posted by local agencies to share it with public. Um, this is, we do this all uh, with like OCSD. OCSD does a really good job, um, uh, posting on social media, so then we'll we'll tag it and forward it to our our um, um, customers as well. So um, this will be continued. Any any questions on this page?
I do have one. Are we getting some uh, information and then announcements on Channel Three for, with the city? Because they're willing to do it.
Uh, I don't know if we have or not. I'll I'll double check on that.
Yeah, because we should. Things come up, that come up and it'd be natural, just like having a symbol on there too.
Definitely, good suggestion.
Well, I think Tri Pepe should should make us aware of those opportunities, including, including what Arlene is talking about.
Agreed.
Hey Scott, I have two questions.
Yes.
Um, first of all, under one of our strategies, I would like to see a more defined strategy on working with OCC's Recycling Center. Um, just so, we both rely on each other so much that I think they deserve to have a strategy that we focus with them or on them a little bit more.
Okay.
Get that in there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And then the second question I had was, I saw on Facebook or a email maybe about the city is now entered into a coronavirus task force to get things back in line and they've got representatives from different agencies and different people on this, this new committee.
Yes.
Noticed that we were not included in that. Do you know why?
Um, I've got my suspicions, but I don't really want to say it publicly.
Okay, I I understand that, but we are an integral part of what what's happening with all of this. We're, we're getting a lot of questions. I just think maybe, I don't know how you get the word to them, but we should have been, we should have been put on that, on that committee as well.
Well, I I think, I think a lot, uh, 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 help can come from from the board directors, elected officials. If you talk to your colleagues in the city council, I'm sure they'll get their attention.
Uh, sometimes that's easier said than done.
Yeah.
Especially right now.
Okay.
Because some of us have tried.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, just thought.
Okay, next slide, please. Um, so we'll, we'll monitor LAFCO activities, um, by going um, to regular attending meetings and 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 briefing the board on on these activities. Um, also work with the city of Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, to enhance services. Um, and that is to uh, create enforced workflow sheets for projects requiring sewer permits. Um, Beau, do you mind kind of sharing what that means with the board? Beau, you there?
Yep, yep, yep. Sorry, I'm talking, repeat that?
So uh, one of our action plans is to work with the cities of Costa Mesa, Newport Beach to create an enforced workflow sheet for projects requiring sewer permit.
Yeah, so, okay, um, so for that strategy, um, or action plan, uh, we were hoping to somehow be able to, similar to how what we have with Newport Beach right now, where they would require their um, applicants or clients to come to CMSD to pull sewer permit before they issued their building permits. Uh, we were hoping we could somehow bridge, um, something with the city of Costa Mesa to allow that as well. We could uh, have all of our permits um, issued or paid for at the same time the building permits also gets issued. So there's no um, um, uh, overlapping um, building permits and the sewer permits.
Okay, any questions?
Scott, back on the LAFCO thing, are, I think we should assign a sign of either a board member and or a staff to be that liaison.
We we can do that if you want, if you want to sign a board member there, sure, absolutely.
Well, I I I don't think, you know, I um, I think we should figure out someone to be assigned to do that, like, like we do, you know, someone is assigned to go to the Integrated Waste Management System. LAFCO is probably equally important.
Well, we do, we do have Peter Whittingham going there on our behalf, and he reports to us. So he does go to those meetings on a regular basis, and he reports to us what's going on with LAFCO.
I think that, uh, I think that if 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 it's going to be Peter that's assigned, he should know that. And and when he can't go, you know, we could have an alternate.
Sure, absolutely.
Does LAFCO know, does LAFCO know that he's representing us or not?
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're doing Zoom.
I think LAFCO knows Peter's there on our behalf.
Think so? Okay.
Yeah. At least some of the members of LAFCO know it.
Just one?
At least two.
Maybe two.
Bob, I thought you and I were the representatives of to LAFCO from uh, our sanitary district.
I don't think we officially assigned a board member to attend LAFCO meetings, but if it's something we want to put on the agenda, we can do that.
Uh, well, I just, yeah, not necessarily, but uh, I I just thought I heard, you know, we were appointed as a representative and, you know, vice president.
Oh, Jim, we're we're appointed to be the voting man, you're appointed to be the
Right.
You're the voting member, or I mean, the election voting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
But that's entirely different than, um.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I have a question, I have a question.
Yes.
About working with the cities of Costa Mesa regarding the permits. Didn't we ask RBH to represent us and let them know? Working with the city of Costa Mesa to let us know and that we require certain permit before they give out permits? Didn't we say that at our, like our board meeting like a month ago?
No, I don't, I don't recall that. I know, um, correct me wrong, but but I think about, about he goes to their well, development review committees and and Beau is the one that gets informed um, on on the projects. Um, so I.
I know, but I think Bob made a suggestion that RBH does it because of all the uh, construction that they have potentially have coming up. And RBH was supposed to represent us.
I don't.
And we asked them to do that, not us do it.
They have historically, uh, Rob, Rob attended all those meetings, you know, religiously.
Yeah, I'll tell you, like, I don't think he's doing that. Well, but I'll check.
Uh, because we we talked about at the board meeting that we asked him to do that for us. We were specific, Bob, that we wanted them to talk to Costa Mesa.
Yes.
And we wanted them to give us a report back, but Beau could do it also, but we need RBH because they're doing, you know, different permits for us. And we, remember that, Arlene?
Yes, I do, I do. I had a question too. Uh, doesn't the ci- city still have that one stop shop? Where you go to it and you get your permit, you get everything all at once?
Yeah, they used to have that, I won, but I haven't heard lately.
Beau, do you know, can you, can you respond to that, Beau?
Yeah, um, when you, when you're referring to the one stop shop, are you referring to just go to um, like the second floor and just pulling a building permit?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so um, people are still going there to pull a building permit. The only thing is that for CMSD, um, for example, once you're pulling a permit, um, they don't have a requirement for you to pull CMSD's sewer permit before they issue their building permit. So it's kind of more so kind of like, well, okay, well, reach out to CMSD to get a sewer permit. But now, the building permit, they're only focused on, you know, the the engineering uh, traffic or every other departments within the city, not necessarily um, CMSD. Or every other departments within the city, not necessarily, um, CMSD.
Maybe we need to work on that as a partner, you know, that we can get a package.
Yes, so, so similar to what right now Newport Beach, uh, what they've been doing is if we service, um, projects at the city of Newport Beach. Um, the city would go ahead and actually enforce the residents to come and pull a sewer permit. Before the city of Newport Beach will issue their building permits to them. So, I mean, uh, that's, that's something that this, this kind of, uh, strategy and action plan kind of came up. Because now that would be, um, perfect for city close to Mesa, that, and we could get that to happen. Then most of our sewer permits would get paid for and issued and we would make sure that all of our projects are looked at.
I think that's a liaison committee discussion.
Yeah, that could be.
Okay.
About, about this bike, what do we do with unincorporated county areas?
Um, so, so unincorporated areas, I believe when, when the clients go to the county and try to pull permit. They would actually inform, um, the client, same thing, similar to what Newport Beach does. Have them come over to CMSD to pull a sewer permit. So we've had, um, uh, multiple projects that, uh, it, it was in that scenario as well.
Okay, well, that, that's good ammunition to go to the city of Costa Mesa and say, hey, the other jurisdictions we work with are doing this. I, I think we need to pursue that, I, I think we're on a good track.
Yeah, very, very true, very good.
Okay, so moving on, um, educate students enrolled in learning institutions. So this is a new one, uh, create a show and tell visits at elementary schools. I seen, um, I remember when I was in Carlsbad, we did, um, we would have the, the fire department or the police department, K nine unit would show up at schools. Um, the tree, the tree maintenance guys would show up to schools and, you know, show off their equipments and the kids got really excited. Uh, that would be, uh, uh, if, if we could work this out with, with the schools or a couple of schools. We could bring, um, our wastewater, uh, crews with the, the combo trucks and the crane trucks. And, and show them how, how we maintain the sewers, I think, uh, the kids will really get a kick out of that. And so, um, we'll try implementing that, um, in, in twenty twenty-two, it'll take some coordination with the schools. That's why, that's why I'm kind of got it out there in twenty twenty-two, but, uh, this would be a good, uh, good partnership with the schools.
Scott, wouldn't it be, uh, easier if we made a, a package that we had? It could go out to the children, they go, I'll sit there and watch a Zoom or whatever. And have the vector truck, have everything there and show our maintenance yard and blah, 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 that kind of thing.
Well, it's, it, it'd be better if we go there, because i- if we take them to the yard, then they, they gotta coordinate with.
No, no, I don't mean take them, I mean, put together a package where we're, you know. Giving a, a movie like, and we're, we're showing, this is what we do. And it's all, you know, could you show even our district office?
I, I think, I, I, I think that to, oh, honestly, Arlene, I think if we watch a video, it might just put them to sleep. Um, I, I think if they're, if they're actually out there touching the equipments, you know, actually visually seeing it. That'll keep them engaged.
Okay.
It'd be like a fire truck, it'd be like a fire truck showing up, I mean. And then when, when we had our, um, annual meeting, you know, the kids were all over that sewer truck.
Right, exactly. They love big trucks, you know, they love trucks, and so if they could actually see it and touch it, I think it gets them excited.
You're right, you're right, okay.
Then we could sell, we could sell little replicas of the truck.
Or the five of us.
Hey Scott, as you, as you move with, move through this, I think it's important not, not just to show them the wastewater side. But I think we need to talk to CRNR and see if we can get them to show up. I mean, I know my, my youngest grandson, when the trash truck comes, he goes eight. So if we can coordinate some of that with CRNR and maybe Orange Coast College, uh, I think that'd be a, a really encompassing program.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a young family in my neighborhood. And every Wednesday morning, uh, the dad brings out his lawn chair, sits on a lawn chair with his son, waiting for the truck to roll up. You know, every week he does it, so yeah, I know, I know boys love their trash trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Does dad sit there with a cooler of beer and wait all day for the truck?
It's cute.
Yeah, the children just stop and they just watch that truck, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Right.
So next is the partner with educational institutions, um, to establish free learning opportunities for, um, SEPA and Discovery Cube. We, we do that right now, um, so we'll continue that partnership with, uh, uh, like the, the county, uh, Board of Education. Um, and, and other, um, institutions. The, the next strategy is, uh, participate in community events to increase visibility. Uh, this one was where maybe we get the citizen advisory committee on board to engage with the public, maybe, uh, have them, um, uh. Participate in our booths, uh, during special events, you know, they are, the, the goal of the committee is also for them to be our ambassadors. To get the word out of what we do, so here's an opportunity to partner with CAC and help them, um, be more visible and help us be more visible. So that was a, a suggestion.
That's good.
Um, also, um, participate in well-attended community events, as I mentioned, we, we do that very well. Um, I think last year we went to nineteen events, uh, or nineteen days, uh, in special events. So, um, always well-attended and we'll continue doing that, so any, any questions on this slide? Okay, moving on. So, um, Mr. President, we're at eleven o'clock right now, I, I said we, we try to do this for two hours. Um, we can, if you want, we can press on for this last element. Uh, and then come back and discuss it in the study session next week, or we can stop right here now and, and bring it back for next week.
I'd prefer just to get it over with, but, uh, but I'll send it, I'll condescend to whoever else, uh, wants to do something different.
I'd say, I'd say stop now and continue later.
Yeah, I think, I think we ought to rest.
I, I have to do an SDRMA board meeting in a little bit, so I'd say stop now.
Okay, okay, that's good. Well, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting to, uh. What, what's the date, or, uh.
So we'll.
Our next, at our next general meeting.
Yeah, so Mr. President, for the public, we'll, 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 we'll pick this up at Community Outreach Communications Element, we'll pick this up on Tuesday, May twelfth. At your study session meeting, and that study session meeting begins at nine thirty in the morning.
Oh, okay. Hey Jim, tell your son Sean to quit photobombing you behind you. He can't help himself. I'm sure.
He didn't realize it, Mike.
Hey Scott.
Yes.
Could I make the suggestion?
Sure.
I think when you go back to review some of the things that we discussed with Bob, maybe he could be included in your meeting with the staff. Because he has a lot of expertise that we don't have. If Bob's available, I just thought that might be a good idea when you're making some changes or additions. Think about it and then if Bob's available, I would invite him to attend with the staff and you guys discuss it.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll make written input and, and or be available.
Yeah, the, the, the written inputs will be fine, if, if I could just, Bo, Vice President, if you submit us the written inputs, uh, we can go off that and that'll be just fine.
Okay, that sounds good, I, I didn't talk about this with Bob, but I thought just from our conversations today might be a good idea.
Sure, sure.
Um, one, one, one thing, one, one thing that would be important to add to the, uh. Plan is, is the, the policy that drives these initiatives. You know, staff, staff knows that, I don't know if the board and the public know it, but, and it would significantly increase the size of the document. But. Orange County Sanitary includes the policy reasons for doing these particular items. In their strategic plan.
That's why I thought you should be included when they discuss these things, Bob, because you have the most expertise.
True, okay, I was gonna say and or opinion.
Us, it helps us. We can either agree or disagree, but it helps.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Oh, Nalani, can you stay online so I can, I can, uh, get hooked up for some sexual harassment training?
Sure.
Really, Bob?
Why, it's only, it's only because it's due, not, not, not because I need it.
Well, I guess I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. So. We'll see you shortly.
Thank you everyone, good job, thank you.